Nine point eight million, or just roughly 1.1 million, under budget year to date. If we look down at line 44, the net earnings before the drinking water state revolving fund grant was, the actual is 800,000, where we actually budgeted a negative 1.2, 1.3 million. So we're 2 million above budget from the net income year to date. So from on the water standpoint, they're right on track revenue wise and their, you can see their operation and maintenance is below budget, which is leading to the big net income.
Okay, questions on water? Anything else? Go to sewer.
Sewer is page 13. And with sewer kind of correlating with water for some of the district, you see that our actual sewer revenue year to date is just over 4 million versus a budget of 3.6 million or 426,000 above budget. Line 26, the total operating expenses are 2.4 million versus a budget of 2.8 million, so roughly 400,000 below budget. With that, what goes to line 37, the net income from operations, the actual is 1.4 million versus a budget of around 600,000, leading to an 840,000 above budget at the end of May.
Any questions on sewer? All right, so let me talk real quick about something you may have heard is about accounts receivable. So one of the things that the governor allowed and that the town is, has implemented and however the town goes, the city has to go because we're a borough and the utility as well, and that is they have deferred receipt of payments for the first three months, for July, August, and September. So we do have some people that, we have a lot of people that are still paying their bills, but we do have some people that are deferring their bills. We are talking to them about, can you set up payment plans to do anything because at some point, the bills are going to come due. There have been some, right now, our accounts receivable is on tack, on track rather, for historical averages, so we're on track to that. There are other municipal utilities that are actually, their accounts receivable are quite high and they're concerned about the impact to revenue. Right now, we don't face that, but as we move along, we'll, we'll keep you posted as to whether or not that becomes an issue in Grind Utilities. Is that accurate? Is that correct, Director?
Very much so.
Okay.
I have a question.
Councilor Carter.
Is, is there a way to determine or distinguish if there's a homeowner that pays taxes to us as opposed to a renter who doesn't pay taxes but pays rent? And the only thing I'm saying is because if, when it comes to arrears and arrears, you know, you, you, it can get backed up, you know? And if they don't, if they're not figuring out, then it's going to be really hard to, to, you know, I think it may become an issue where we're going to either bite the bullet or do we keep these, because we're going to, it's the summertime and that goes right into winter and they don't cut off utilities during the winter, right? So when winter starts, you may have a situation where we either bite the bullet or we say, okay, you know, you still owe us these funds. What, is there, is there a way where you can tell if there's a renter who doesn't pay taxes and a homeowner that's in a financial bind? Is there a way that we can look out for, say, I mean, I don't know, like, I mean, can't, say comp everybody's thing, but what about the homeowners that definitely pay taxes? Is there a way that you can give them some type of, I wouldn't say a forbearance, but maybe a forgiveness? Like, would that be a big hit if we looked after city residents who pay taxes but are absolutely not going to be able to pay those arrears?
I don't know. Does Tina have that ability? I don't, does she have the ability to determine between a resident and a renter?
We know who's renting.
Okay. So, but let me answer your question this way. So depending on how long this situation goes with the COVID pandemic, there is a potential that this could go into November. If it goes into, if it goes into November, if people are affiliated with a program, they got to be affiliated with the program through TVCCA, then the shut-off prohibition period kicks in again and doesn't let up until, I think it's May. So there is a potential that there may be people out there that have not paid a bill for a year. We are looking, what we're doing now is we're trying to get people to pay something as opposed to, because this is not a give me, it's not a freebie.
Well, I understand that. Like, in the case of a situation where literally, it's like, we're asking somebody to pay now, maybe, I don't know, $1,300 in arrears, like, there's going to come a situation where, especially in the wintertime, where we're not going to cut them off. But, you know, I, I just, I'm just looking in the, in the, like, do we have reserves for that or should we be thinking of that last case scenario?
We, we are, we are thinking about that scenario. We do have some reserves. Let me, and then I'll recognize you, Councilor Depot. We are looking at that. We will deal with that on a case-by-case basis as it comes in.
Yeah, like if they have a lot.
I mean, we're not, we're not ready to go out and say,
Yeah, I know.
Okay, everybody, guess what? Happy Christmas, we're going to give you, right? Because we are a business, right? And we do have expenses, we do have revenues, and the payment of the bills is revenues. But let me recognize, Councilor Depot, because she is in a unique position, I think, to, I'm not sure where you're going to go, but.
Well, I wasn't going to address it like that, but I, I was just going to say, I know, because utilities are essential, you, you can't really not use your utilities. I think there's a handful of charities and social programs that people can apply for, so maybe the first thing that we should do is get them organized in one place and put that out, maybe even on Facebook or something, the further this goes. Because I know there are a lot of them, because you have to have heat or you know, you can't, like, if you have kids, you can't not, you know, heat your house. So I know that there, that's a unique place where there are several social programs that help just pay the bill, like they'll just.
Absolutely. TVCCA is one of them.
United Way.
United Way is another one. We, we also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Catholic Services in New London, I believe. There's another one in Norwich.
Okay. And one of the things that we do later in the summer is we start putting out information in the flyers for people to start applying for the heating assistance programs. So we do address that every year. This year, I do, I do agree with you. I think this year is unique and we may find more people in need than what we've had.
Yeah, the timing is just, it's going to fall back into, I mean, I don't know, but the deferment that we're giving is throughout the summer and then it's going to be literally right back into wintertime where you can't cut them off, you know? So it's going to be a difficult time, you know?
But then there are people that are already paying now, because there are some people that still have jobs. We, we, we've done pretty well. We've weathered the storm. Some of the commercials have been hit because of businesses, obviously. Industrials are okay. There's, our residents have been, they're across the spectrum as to whether or not they have, they have been laid off or they have jobs or they're working from home and those kind of things. They're, you know, Norwich Public Utilities has had some challenges, but the casino was a large user and so they laid people off. So there's a double hit in that a large employer is no longer, was no longer using services at the time and then a lot of their employees were laid off. And so that was a double whammy to those guys. We were, are fortunate enough that we haven't had that issue here. You're right, we're not immune to it, but we are aware, you know, Tina's aware of it. Tina and I've talked about it. Ron and I've talked about it, about looking forward and not just waking, waking up and say, what, how does that?
Because, you know, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. And I, I mentioned the city residents, but in general, it's even the renters, because there's renters that aren't even paying rent and their first obligation is to pay rent first.
Yep, absolutely.
It's going to be tough. I think we have to prepare for, to take it ill in some fashion or another if it gets to that, you know? That's it.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have anything on that? Okay, we'll move to 690, which is a city budget, budget presentation. Because we're doing year-end closings and financials, I'm going to wait until July the 5th and then a July 5th presentation, Ron will, Director Yoush will put together a presentation to talk about closing out financials. Okay?
Everything is 7:42.
Do you have it?
Yeah, we don't have it.
Right, the reason, the reason you don't have it is because we're not going to discuss it. That's what I just said.
I was just telling you.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, we don't have it because Ron and I talked about whether or not to present it today, hand it out at this meeting, or to finalize, close out of the fiscal year and then report out on July 5th at our next meeting. Okay? All right, so that takes us to 7:42. Grind Utilities, Director, if you could come up to the center. I don't know why I said July 5th, it's July 7th, or July?
6th.
6th, sorry. All right. The first one that we have to discuss is AZ Corporation Safety Consulting Services. I think you have that information in front of you. Okay, Director?
GU has a safety team that was started shortly after I arrived, five, about five years ago. And the safety team decided that we needed to purchase safety consulting services and use a third party to come in and review the operation and make sure we were doing a good job with safety. So they bid safety services for four days a week. We have a consultant come in and it was a five-year bid. This is the, this is basically the fourth renewal on that bid. And GU recommends that we actually renew that contract. Jim Healy happens to be the AZ rep that's on site. He spends one day a week generally getting trained and things that he brings to us routinely. AZ since that time has also picked up other municipal utilities and has specialized in utility safety services. So they're doing a really good job. The safety committee reviews his services routinely and he meets with the mayor and covers a certain portion of the city also. He does the rest of the city.
Right. He does, he does training for the city, does observations for the city as well. So he's, he's not, he's primarily for the utility, but he also provides safety services to the city. And this resolution is not for the new, not for the contract, it's for the final year of this contract, right?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Depot?
Do we have, has our safety record improved since we've started using them? Just out of curiosity? Like, do we, we must track accidents and?
Well, it's very interesting because at one point, we started to report on that and when I first got here, there wasn't a lot of reporting. The numbers were low and as we got into it and the whole climate became more and more safety conscious, the numbers of self-reporting, what employees report actually went up. We do not have that many incidences anymore. They're reviewed quarterly at a city safety meeting and Ron, I think you track them overall.
Yeah, we do have tracked. They are down in this fiscal year compared to prior fiscal years.
And one of the things that we started doing when I came in was to look at the workman's comp issues. So we have, so I break down injuries in short term and long term and look at, so you have near misses, you have minor injuries and major injuries. In private industry, you talk about recordables. We don't, and the municipality doesn't track recordables because we're not required to, but our number of injuries have gone down, our workman's comp costs have gone down. As a, I think part of this is because of the safety team and the commitment. I think part of this is because of what Jim Healy's doing with training everybody, getting everybody involved. Also, we talk about safety a lot and when I go to job sites, I look for safety stuff and I talk to people, you know, I'm looking at, are you wearing your PPE? Are you doing things safely? Because I have a safety background as well and so I do see the good things that he's doing. We are revising our safety manual this year. That's one of the things that's on our list to do. The other thing that he's working at, working on with the utilities is JSA's Job Safety Analysis. And what that is, is when you go do a task, you break the task down into its functional elements and then you insert the safety precautions in there and then that's a, that is a combination of safety and technical when it works together and then people go off and execute that task, execute the task and then they're doing it safely. So, Councilor Ortiz.
So couldn't we send somebody to get trained for doing this? I mean, even, even a one, you know, a person, it would be much more than a hundred and some thousand dollars a year.
Okay, so, so we haven't done, when we, next year, when we go out for the new bid, we're going to need to do this again, because we haven't done this in a while, but we're going to do it again. And that is, you need to, we, one of the things that I looked at when I got here is why don't we have our own safety guy, right? Our own safety department or safety representative. So one of the things that we did was we looked at the cost of maintaining a safety department with the credentials and all those kinds of things versus using contractors. This is not what Jim's getting paid, this is what his company's getting paid. So there is an overhead adder to this. The, the good thing that I like about this is that if, if I have a safety department, then that department is going to have the expertise for a certain amount of things, as does Jim. When Jim runs out of his expertise, he goes to AZ and says, I need help in this area. So he has reached back into his company for somebody, for example, if we needed to go into confined space entry, right? Permitted confined space entry. If he wasn't experienced in that, he could reach back, reach back into AZ and somebody could come in and do that for us. Whereas if I had an individual or a group of individuals, we would have to have that in-house or we'd have to send that out and purchase that through a contractor. Does that kind of answer your question? That does not answer your question?
I just don't see, I don't see this money wasted. This is personally.
I understand.
When we can train somebody or get somebody out of a university, that would be much, much less than this.
Okay. Councilor Depot?
I, I was just going to say, I know it seems like a lot of money, but I'm, and I'm sure Ron Yoush can attest, but if we were to hire our own person though, you'd have to put salary plus benefits, workers' comp insurance, it would add up to probably somewhere around this number, if not more, which is part of the reason that people use contractors for jobs where you would pay a significant amount of money. Because I, a safety expert, you wouldn't pay them $40,000 a year. You'd pay them much more. So I would imagine that this is, is, even though it seems like a big number, is probably, and again, I would defer to Ron, but it's probably cheaper than we would pay in benefits on top of salary.
Councilor Carter? Councilor Carter?
Um, I, I do, I do see what Councilor Ortiz is saying. Until you just explain why we do this, I, I, I mean, I've, I've, actually, I'm in college, I worked a year for AZ, you know? And so I do know that you, you can train somebody up. You don't have to hire somebody that has all the credentials of a safety thing. You can hire an entry level, you can hire an entry level person and stick with this guy for four years and say, okay, I have this, that, and the third, and if he needs a different certification, we can send him out, but at least he's at salary. So you can do that. But what the mayor's saying and explaining is that, say, we did have that, that, that person that we, that we did train up and we, but we hit a situation that we don't know anything about, we would have to hire somebody that does have that experience and that price tag would be far more than what we're paying AZ. AZ, they can, they can reach and do this, that, and the third, and that's that, that's the fee that we're paying. If that, if does that?
I mean, I, I understand. I understand, it's just that I still.
But I think, I think that's what I'm saying. I, 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 Mayor, I would have that question and that's what I would always say, especially for re, re, renewing up orders. That's four years, you can train somebody else.
Well, and I, and I think.
I understand what you're saying.
I think for next year, when we get ready to go out to bid, we should have a breakdown of if we were going to do it in-house versus if we were going to contract it to convince the council. One way or the other. The other thing I would suggest is that typically, for example, when you are trained to do your job, most people are trained for a certain task, certain skill set. So this safety guy, this safety representative, whoever this is, has to understand the General Ocean Manual, which is 1910, and then they have to understand the different standards, which is the electrical safety standard. They also have to understand the water safety standard and they have to understand the sewer standard, applicability for that. And then when you get into Parks and Rec with the lawn mowers and things like that and you get into Tim Umeritz, Director Umeritz is with highway, roads and highway and public works, then you have other standards that apply. Some of it falls under general industry, but, but not everything does. So there's, I guess my, the, the thing that I see that is beneficial is that if Jim has an issue, because he has, he brings with him a lot of certifications. If, but there have been times that he come up with something and said, look, I can't do this. So if we're, if we were normal, we owned, we owned the, we owned the safety department and we come up against something and said, okay, we don't have this expertise and then we're actually, we're actively working a job and we don't have that expertise, we don't have the reach back. So now, depending on the cost of the individual service, we may have to go through utilities, the utility commission and then come to council in order to get that unless we could do it under services, right? And then we'd have to follow our purchasing policy, which is 1004 on the utility side. So there, there is some, one is autonomy, I guess, but there's also some urgency that, you know, we could just reach back, we could make a phone call and we could have somebody here in a short period of time. That may not still answer your question and it may not comfort you, but that's how I would answer the question.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, where am I? Deputy Mayor Beckford?
Sure, I just had a question for the director. Are we taking recommendations or best practices and incorporating them into standard operating procedures?
Every day. That's, he's involved, he knows most of the work crews. Because he's a third party, he doesn't report to management, so he's independent. He just reports the facts, he's comfortable advising us. And every day, we modify procedures. In the JSAs, we modify JSAs and update the JSAs because we're getting better and better at something that we weren't very good at before. Thank you.
Councilor McKay?
I, I agree with Councilor Ortiz that maybe at the end of the, this next year, when we're looking to re-up, that maybe we could at least take a look and see whether, now that we've had someone for five years, we've established these procedures, bringing someone and having somebody in-house. It's just something to look at, but there, there's also the other side of the coin is to think about, I mean, what, what if we did go that route and there is a safety issue? Is there some sort of li, would, would we be opening ourselves up to extra liability because we got rid of our certified safety consultant and went with somebody that might not have those certifications? So it's just a thought.
I will tell you, when ConOSHA came and we had the ConOSHA state inspection, where I think some of you were here, some of you may not have been, but AZ was instrumental. Jim was, was the primary source to get, get our arms around all the, the non-conformances that we had, but he was able to reach back to people that had been through ConOSHA inspections before and they called me up and said, I already had a plan of attack, I wanted to address it, but they said, for these particular things, here's what you need, person meeting, there were many fines that were either reduced or were eliminated. And that came from the reach back in that, in that, in that group, in AZ group. Ron?
I just want to clarify one thing and I think what Ron said was, when he first got here, they were in the process of doing the bid for this, when AZ came on board. This wasn't the first time I met a safety consultant. Before that, it was JLN Associates for quite a few years and then before that, it was Klaus. He was here for an extended period of time. So I just want to clarify that this isn't a new five-year, it's just a new five-year with AZ. Just kind of based on the comments, just want to make sure that we're.
Yeah, absolutely.
Truly in store for all the sources.
But one of the things that I want to make sure that staff and I are clear with to take heed of Councilor Ortiz and other councillors' comments, is that we need to do a business case analysis and prove that this is the right way to go and we need to prove to the council and to the commission that that is the right way to do things. Just because we've always done it that way, doesn't mean it's the right way to do it. I see benefit, but we need to be able to prove to council, because next time, I would expect council to be more discerning and to say, okay, show me the numbers, show me why, prove to me why we need to go this route. Councilor Ortiz?
Yes, sir. One more thing. I understood that the injuries that happen are not, are not, are not happening as much as before, but we still don't, don't have a graph of the negative things that happened.
We, we have, we have all in poor place injuries documented and recorded.
So I, I would like to see a couple of years back, I think.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Okay. No problem, we can do that. Any other question and comments on this? If not, I need a motion to move this to mayor council meeting of July, is July 6th, right?
7.
Yes, July.
July?
July 6th.
6.
It would be the 6th, right?
Yes.
Okay, July 6th is a Monday because the holiday actually falls on Saturday.
Someone?
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Okay, Environmental Partners Consulting, the next one?
We have talked about this, this one here before. This is an extension of a prior purchase order that we issued for $50,000 to Environmental Partners. Environmental Partners was the recommendation of a state contractor, preferred vendor of Mystic Air. They recommended that we use Paul Muniz to, as the PCB consultant. Now, Paul has been working with us, the project, Stan Tech, RH White, and then helping everybody get through the requirements of the EPA, the DEEP, and the DPH. This additional purchase order is to continue the testing of both the paint, painted and the painted surfaces, surfaces inside the plant, which we just got approval to move forward with from the EPA, and also the testing in the, what we do exactly with the dirt pile that has possible PCB contamination in it also. The plan that he has come up with and gotten approved by the EPA actually takes a look at the possibility of reusing a good portion of that dirt also, if it's approved. And they're doing this based on recommendations from the EPA. So the saga is not over yet and this is the continuation of that saga and as you can see, it's not a little bit of money, it's a good amount of money.
Okay, Councilor Depot?
So just for clarification, this is the contractor that we hired after Stan Tech, after they made a plan that didn't get approved by the EPA, correct? There was an issue with the? So, so, so far, they've done a good job because they actually. There was an issue with the, so, um, so, so far they've done a good job because they actually got a plan approved to deal with it, however it's costing us money. But we're still working on recovering some of the intended costs from the Stan Tech con- contract for either work they didn't finish or didn't do properly? Is that correct?
We will be working that through later and Stan Tech may be liable.
So some of this contract money, we may be able to recover at some point, but we have to spend it in order to fix the issue with the PCBs. We don't have another option.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions on this line item?
What is, uh, sorry.
Deputy Mayor Beckford?
Mr. Mayor, uh, you or maybe the director can answer this, but, um, what is the timeline? You know, I'm sure when we have a, you know, when you have an injury, you have a certain amount of time in order to pursue something. Do we have a timeline of when we're going to try to recoup some of, uh, that money?
Well, the project finish date is sometime around Thanksgiving. And in the meantime, uh, the Stan Tech contract will probably be extended at some point to that Thanksgiving time period, because the original, um, construction contract ended, say, September 1st. Right about September 1st is when it started. It may have been September 10th. So we will be looking at the, uh, the agreement with Stan Tech as we go currently and working on negotiating how to move that date out. So there's multiple irons in the fire per se that we're dealing with simultaneously. We have put them on notice. They know our stands with dealing with the, with the pile of the dirt. And the, the actual cost to deal with it isn't totally defined yet. Because the plan actually may reuse a good portion of it. It may decide that we can't reuse any of it. So we don't know. That's all in the process.
So what I'm hearing is we don't know the full, like, damages yet, so to speak?
We, we do know that we've hired this contractor to do this work.
Mayor, do you have any other, any more clarification?
Did we sample the dirt pile this week? I think that was on the list to do.
I do not believe it's happened yet.
Okay.
There's a special protocol that they're following and that's going to reset motion.
There, there's a grid, there's a grid pattern that was submitted, uh, that follows a school PCB issue that was in another part of the state. We use that as an example. So there's a grid pattern going to be doing to sample the dirt pile. This is, this is the dirt that was excavated when there was, uh, right, when some of the caulking from the windows and all that. Based on the results of the PCBs and the samples there, that will determine whether we can reuse that or whether we have to go to a landfill or whether we have to take it, maybe even to Rhode Island, where, uh, they will take higher levels of contamination.
I have a question. Sorry.
Hold, hold on. Counsel Carter, I recognize you in just a second. Let me finish. Is the, so some of this work that they're doing, is this all for the current plant? Or is this also part for the old plant? So some of this is in project, out of project? Or is this all in project?
It's, it's for the plant and the dirt pile.
Okay.
So it's.
So it's in, so really it's all in project? Because the dirt pile was part of the project.
I would say so, yeah.
That, uh, was originally started. Okay? And so we will not be able to look at, my understanding is we will not be able to look at legal remedies until after the contract is over. Is that correct?
Oh, we're very close to that.
Okay.
We need to know final cost.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's fine. As long as, I just wanted to make sure that we were still within the, the timeline.
We are. We're not timed, we're not anywhere near being timed out, right?
Okay.
Okay, not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Was, did I see another hand somewhere?
I'm all right.
Okay. Oh, Counsel Carter, you had a?
No, I'm all, I'm all good.
You're good? Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? If not, I need a motion to move this to the Mayor Council Meeting of July 6th?
Some of.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Springbrook Financial Accounting System?
This is an annual renewal. Um, because it's $60,000, it comes, uh, through the utility commission to council. Springbrook is the financial accounting system used for both the city and the utility. And this is the annual fee that keeps it kicking. Are there any questions?
This is under 742. There should be, uh.
Springbrook Financial Accounting System?
It's a fairly long resolution.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is our accounting software. It's just, it's an annual, uh, fee.
Maintenance fee.
Maintenance fee. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, I need a motion to move this to the Mayor Council Meeting of July 6th?
Some of.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Underground Storage Project?
This is sewage related. It's for the PAF systems. We have underground tanks, fuel tanks for emergency generators at the East Slope and the West Side Pump Stations. These tanks have outlived their useful lives.
Hold on, hold on a second. Tell them where East Slope is and the West Side Pump Station is. Because I didn't know when I first found out and these guys probably don't know. So East Slope is right out here. It's right behind us. It's.
It's up the hill.
And then.
Across the highway.
And then, uh, the other one is at Pfizer. Right? Is that not the one that, is it Pfizer?
East Slope, West Side.
Oh, the West Side Pump Station. Well, the West Side, is that not the one down at Pfizer?
Oh, yeah, you're correct. Sorry.
Okay. So right out here, where we had the bioxide tank and all that, there's a, there's a storage sink underneath fuel tank that has exceeded its shelf life, exceeded its life. And this is what this is for. There's also one as you, when you are going down the hill, okay, let me get you there. Where the Avery Market is and where Pfizer is and where the Buckeye Terminal is.
Right next to railroad.
You guys know where it is, where I'm talking? If you're going toward Eastern Point Beach, you're going down the hill on the left-hand side, right before the railroad tracks. There's a little station right there. That's our station. That's a pump station and that has an underground tank that has to be replaced as well because it's out of date. Last year, we replaced the one at the PAF, Pollution Abatement Facility Sewer Plant, that was underground as well. The state had red-tagged that, uh, out of service. The reason they didn't tag these two is because these are smaller and did not meet their requirement. But, but their requirement for red tagging them, but the fact that they're out of date, and we wanted to get them replaced. So that's what this is for. Counselor McCain?
This is just for my curiosity. If it's an underground tank, do they have to pull up pavement and things like that down by Pfizer?
There is a, there is a paved and/or cemented section there. Uh, we'll be using, this is, uh, this is Kenny, right? Services. We use the service station equipment. So they've done this before. They've done it for us and they'll take care of all that. So yeah, there's going to be some, some removal of pe, of, uh, pavement in order to get to this tank.
So this is the amount for both tanks, both areas?
And new underground tanks?
Yeah. Good.
Okay. Counsel Carter?
How, how old are the tanks? Or how old are, are those pump stations?
I, they, they needed to replace it 20 years and they're older than that.
Okay. Because the, the reason I'm asking is, I, I mean, and this isn't your fault. You've only been here over five years, right? I feel like I've been on the council for three years, two years, years. And we're replacing a lot of outdated, uh, with a lot of outdated things in my tenure here that either, like, if it's 20, like, why now? Like, why now as opposed to five years ago or six years ago? Like, or do we know that there's another 10 years uses? I feel like there's a lot of stuff that's coming across the council that's like, all right, we need to get this replaced right now. Why wasn't it replaced eight years ago?
Do you want to, do you want to address this or you want me to address this?
Uh, it, this has been on the list as long as I've been here and before I've been here, it just hasn't been put on.
Yeah, but that's, but I want to know why though. Why is this stuff getting sent to us like now? This, this isn't the first time where some of, and I'm not trying to come off of you. I'm talking about utilities in general.
You are correct.
So what if we don't vote for this, right? Has there been a time where this has come across six, seven years ago? And they were like, "All right, we're not going to do this." I just want to know why.
Oh, go ahead.
The, the major reason this is being done now is because currently the sewage account has $3 million in the checkbook. And this was one of the recommended capital projects to be done during this budget year. And what we decided when we approved this budget was we weren't going to, um, approve via the budget any capital projects until we saw the cash flow in the account and we saw that the account could afford to do the work.
Does that answer your question? I'm going to get, I'm going to answer your question in a minute, but it's not going to be pleasant. Counsel Depot?
Well, I just wanted to say, I know that when the whole thing with this sewer, um, taking the sewer bill out of taxes, part of the reason we did that is because projects like this weren't getting done. So now that we have the sewer money coming in, we can't spend it on anything except things that are for the sewer and what was happening before. That's why we had that, there was an issue. We had a giant claim and part of the reason is a lot of tax dollars were, we would make plans to do something and then something more important came up. So we weren't able to repair stuff that was related to sewer because it kept getting approved. The money would be moved to something that was deemed more important.
Yeah, but that, that just happened. I'm talking about since I've been on this council the last three years. This, this isn't the first time. And it just, I mean, you, this isn't the first time. It's not, you know, you've been on as long as me.
You want, can, Deputy Mayor Beckford?
I'll, I'll just, um, so I, I think, I think what they've said is, is kind of accurate. These things are coming up, um, and things come up every, every year, right? But they, they have a giant, uh, they have a lot of, uh, moving parts, um, to the utilities. And I think, um, part of it is they have to, yeah, there may be like three or four things that have to get changed, but in a, in a single year, they may only be able to pick two or so.
Yeah, that, that's not what, what I'm saying, you know? And I, I understand that. If it needs to get fixed, it needs to get fixed. I understand that. I'm all about it. What I'm saying is, is why, like, so they say, that's, it's been 20 years.
Right.
Like, I've been on the council for, this is my third year. This is probably, probably the fourth time that something has come across this, this my tenure, that little like, "Oh, this is way outdated. It needs to get done." So I want to know why that happened as opposed to before. Because it, it, regardless of the fact where, if we moved sewer or not, if it needed to get done 10 years ago, it should have got done.
Sure. I, I think there's a misunderstanding. The tank has been underground for 20 years, not that it's been outdated for 20 years.
Well, I know it's hasn't been outdated for 20. What happened?
Right. So, so my point is, it's coming up, it's coming up now.
I believe the tank has been due for about three years.
Three years, okay. Well, that's simple. That, that's my question. Okay, I get that. But there's just other things too, other projects. It was like, okay, we need to do this, we need to do this.
Yep.
But I'm just wondering why wasn't it done then as opposed to now? And this is stuff that happened before we even moved this, this.
Yep. All right.
I'm not coming off of it. I just wanted to.
No, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to give you an answer. I'm going to give you the answer that I think is the truth. Because really what you want to know is you're not so much concerned about what do we not do and why did we not do it before? Although we need to answer that. But the question is, what are you going to do to prevent it from happening again?
Well, I'm going to.
Right? I mean, it's all, it's all part of that whole thing. So here we go. I think this is the last thing that is outdated that we're overdue on. I think so. So is, is that, am I close to accurate?
We believe that this is the last thing that is, we should have done regulatory wise that is out. We have a lo, large, large, large work list of things we want to replace.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me continue because I am going to, I'm going to try to answer your question.
I still want to come off like a whatever. And it may, he, he, he could have just said, he could have just said, "Hey, listen, this stuff that needs to get done, you know, you're a director that wants to get stuff done."
Well, let me, let me take you back to seven, let me take you back to 17 when I became the mayor. What we had done in the past was this, remember the sewer was part of the tax, right? PAF was in the tax base. $1 million is one mil. So in order to do a million dollars worth of work, you'd have to raise taxes by one mil. Anybody want to do that?
No.
You guys ready to go raise it for a mil? So what happened was people would prioritize in some things, and sometimes that was at the utility level. Sometimes that was at another level, maybe as high as the mayor level. And there were decisions that were made on what work could be done, when and where. One of the first things that we did, major things that we did, was we moved the sewer out of the tax base into an enterprise account with the intent of building up cash so that we could do some of the smaller things and be able to bond. We'll talk about, we are eventually going to be talking about bonding, about what we're going to be doing later on. Now, one of the things that has always aggravated me is we have, one of the things I come in, I'm like, "What's out of date? Do we have a maintenance, do we have a planned maintenance system, BMS, which I did in the Navy? Do we have short-term, long-term? How do you prevent things? How do you track things? How do you track projects? How do you track overdoses?" The fact that we had a red tag that the state called us and said, "We're red tagging you." You have no idea how much that aggravated me. Because one, we should have figured that out on our own. Two, the state should never direct us to do corrective action. So one of the questions that we started asking is, "What else is out there? What else needs to be looked at? What was not being done?" And so we have done that for electric. We've done it for water. We've done it for sewer. As things happen and as we find things, we're fixing them. I'll give you another example in the municipality. The beach chairs, we put the new beach chairs there because the old beach chairs, as, as nostalgic as they were and as tall as they were, they were out of spec. They were a safety hazard. Because if you're over four feet, you got to have safety.
The lifeguard chairs.
Right, lifeguard chairs. So once I found out about those, I said, "Why aren't we replacing those?" We've replaced them. So that out of spec is done. We have one more out of spec on the safety side, which is now by the Playscapes. We're going this year in '21, we are going to be replacing the chips and all that are there with this, uh, biodegradable stuff to soften the blow should a chow fall off and, and those kind of things. We're going to get those fixed, uh, and get it, you know, get everything. We'll exceed whatever the standards are. But we're taking care of them because once they get brought to, once I find out about them, I'm bringing them to you guys. We're going to, we're, we are going to get things back in spec. We are looking at what we're going to do for the next five years. What are the, what are the major projects for electric, water, sewer? What are the major projects for public works, Parks and Rec, everybody, so that we can get our arms around these, find the money to do this, right? So that's where we're going with this. And part of it is, we may not have known, but part of it is, we may have known, but we didn't want to say anything yet because we didn't have the money. What I'm saying now is, I want to know. I want to know. If it's out of spec or if it's due, I want to know so that we can prioritize it. I will find money. We will find money somewhere. So it's a, it's a different philosophy with what we're doing in the utility now and here citywide overall.
Yeah.
Counsel Carter?
And sorry, then that, that's the answer that I was really expecting and that's an acceptable answer. You know, you, you, both you guys are proactive and find things that need to be fixed and I agree with that. I more wanted to know because, you know, I mean, the, the nineties, the late, the early, I wasn't, I wasn't involved in all this stuff. So I don't know why. So I was literally just, "Okay, why now?"
Right.
But that makes sense. You're, you're targeting things that need to get, that need to be addressed and that's, that's good.
It's not a coincidence. It is, it, this is absolutely on purpose.
Okay.
Counsel Ortiz?
So you're the doer. It's without, without stepping on anybody's toes.
We are all.
All comes when you took office. And so you're, you're, you're a doer.
Yes, but it, yeah. Yes, but it, yeah, yes, but it's not just me, it is the utility. The utility is, here's the thing, I'm saying, I wanna know, and the utility is bringing it up. Right? Before, there may not have been incentive to bring it up, there may not have been a reason. I'm not.
Yeah.
picking on anybody else, I'm not apologizing for anybody else, uh, past, present, or otherwise. What I'm saying is, I have a different philosophy, and as long as I'm in this seat, sorry, toward the middle. As long as I'm in this seat, then this is the approach we're going to take.
Makes sense.
And that has been embraced, uh, by the utility. The uti, do, don't, don't get what I said wrong, the utility is staffed with very smart men and women. They are doing the right thing every day. They are, they are now reprioritizing their efforts. You know, our safety record's getting better, our work that we're accomplishing is getting better. Our ability to perform, correction, our ability to plan and perform and execute jobs is, is on an upward trend. We're working on that, but we have people now in place that are pushing those kinds of priorities. Councilor Depot?
I, I just wanted to comment, one of the reasons that I was really excited to move the sewer out was because we're always chasing emergencies to fix emergencies, and I think a lot of companies do that too. They wait for an emergency, and then they fix it, and wait for an emergency and fix it. And we've kind of caught up to making sure we can actually prevent emergencies from happening instead by being proactive, which I think is a much, it's a much better way of doing it.
There actually is a, there is a business case analysis that compares designed to fail to preventive maintenance, and looks at the costs, the initial costs and overall cost, uh, including downtime and opportunity loss cost, uh, that's out there. There is actually a methodology where people look at, okay, do I fix this in advance? Or wait for it to fail and then replace the whole thing? And, and we have had that discussion. We're, right now, we're going the preventative way. Any, uh, Councilor Stafford?
Director, uh, the tanks that are gonna be replaced, are they gonna be above-ground tanks? Are these, the new tanks gonna go back underground?
New tanks will be above-ground, very similar to the fuel tank that's behind the building.
Okay.
That we get our fuel out of.
Yeah, okay.
Well, for example, now as homeowners, if you have underground tanks, and once they expire, you gotta dig them up, and you gotta put them above ground. So it's the same, it's the same thing about, if you have leakage and that kinda stuff, the, the risk associated with having underground tanks. Cause if it's leaking, you can't see it, cause it's underground. So, these are gonna be above-ground tanks.
Okay.
Any other comments on this? If not, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of July 6th.
Some of.
Second.
We have a motion to the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension motion carries. Ordinance approving revisions to the existing rotten utilities water rate schedule.
Um, about four years ago, we did a presentation to move the fifty-four million dollar, um, water, water filtration plant upgrade forward. Uh, and when we did that presentation, we made it clear that we would be on a rate track for the water company. They would have four percent increases for, um, a good amount of time, in more than three years at that point. Um, and in that presentation, I, I, I actually said that. I also promised that we would do, as we got to the back end of the filtration project, and we had the costs defined and understood what they were, along with the paybacks, we would do a cost of service analysis to, it would be the benchmark in the plan for, uh, the water company's financials moving forward. So we had that cost of service study completed recently, um, and we just finished the last three years of four percent rate increases on the water company. They were each July first, um, and, uh, the last increase was last July first. So, were we to have continued with the July first date, um, in the middle of the high usage of the summer, we would've had a four percent rate increase in water. So we made a decision, as we were doing the cost of service study back three or four months ago, maybe it's longer now, uh, six months ago, that we would not have, um, uh, water rate increase in the middle of the high usage period. Um, and maybe that was a lesson after we rolled out the sewer, the sewer rate, and that rolled out July first.
Right.
So, um, this increase is currently scheduled in the ordinance, uh, brought forth to you, to be on October first. It's three, uh, three years at four percent. There was a cost of service study, um, hearing or, or, um, public presentation that was done last Monday night. That the utility commission then voted on to move the rate increase forward. So as a result of that, it gets forwarded to you, all the rate schedules for the utility are, um, enacted by an ordinance, using an ordinance procedure, because the ordinance becomes a law.
Alright, so they have to be approved by the legislative body, and that is this council. We had, one of the things, uh, if you've been following this, and you've been on the council a little bit, we went with the four percent rate increases, because what we didn't wanna do is, we didn't wanna do a large increase once the water treatment plant was put into service, and have sticker shock for the rate payers. So that's why we did what we did. Councilor Depot?
I was just gonna say, I know, you know, for this package this week, we just got, um, you know, a short thing, but the presentation that was done last week was pretty comprehensive, and, um, it went into detail, the people who are gonna experience the largest increase are not the base residential customer. Um, they're not gonna see a huge increase. Um, so I would encourage anyone that's curious about more details to go onto YouTube and watch. I think the presentation's on there, right?
It is.
Um, because I, I found it really informative, it was really, even though we were doing everything remotely, it was still like, a little challenging, but all the information is on there, and it was, um, the person who presented it did a great job, I thought, getting, uh, a lot of the numbers and everything to explain it. I think, just like with the sewer, we need to be proactive, and even though increases are not ideal, without increases, we're not gonna be able to maintain our system, and then we're gonna run into emergencies. And we don't, we don't want that to happen, so that's, you know, I, I know it, sometimes it's hard to take an increase in, in pricing, but the increase is minor, and it's needed to, to keep the finances of the, uh, water service going.
And, and this is to pay for the building of the water treatment plant. Right? That's what this, that's what this, this set of increases is for. This is not for infrastructure, it's not for relining piping, and it is for the building of this, cause, cause once this is due, once this is done, we'll have a low interest, low interest loan from the drinking water state revolving fund. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, if not, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of July 6th.
Some of.
Second.
We have a motion to the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Director. The last thing that we have is seven seventy-two, the ship grant update. So if we, if you go to that, this is informing only. This is to let you know that, uh, I contacted the Connecticut Port Authority, because I wanted to see where we stood with a grant that we applied for. And if you look at the data that we have here, there was a, uh, we're in my eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollar grant that we applied for, our contribution would be a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. The Connecticut Port Authority has approved that to go to bond council. They've also approved the access to the Muni Dock Study for seventy-five thousand dollar with no municipal match. And what that study is for, so the grant, the eight hundred thousand dollar grant, is to build the piers in the dockage. That's what that's for. The seventy-five thousand dollars is to do the study for the Thames View Park, to make it ADA accessible, because the, uh, we're gonna have an ADA accessible kayak boat launch, one of a few that are in the, uh, state of Connecticut. We originally said one of one, one of two, but couldn't find out there's a handful. But that, they are, you know, not every kayak boat launch is, is ADA accessible. The challenge then for us is gonna be, how do you get people down there? And that's where the design will come in from the Thames View Park. We're gonna need a, a long wandering, a low-grade path, so that it meets ADA accessibility requirements. And so, once we identify what that means and what that cost is, then we'll go after another, we will go after another grant, and the estimation before was around five hundred thousand dollars. And we'll see what does, what, you know, what this study brings and, and everything else. This was last discussed, uh, June seventeenth of two thousand nineteen. So you guys were relat, this council was relatively new. But we talked about it then, and the other thing this gives us, this will help, I think, this will help us with the development of Thames Street, and the economic development of Thames Street. So, we still haven't sold the restaurant yet, nor garbos yet. But once those sell, I think this will fall hand in hand. And then once we do this, uh, one of the things that we're gonna be looking at is, is how to, we're working on the odor issues associated with the PAF now. We will then start looking at the visual issues associated with the PAF through, uh, visual cam, visual camouflage and possible gardens on the rooftop to help beautify the, uh, the aesthetics of the PAF. But that's a future, that's a couple of years out. Any questions on this? And like I said, this is informing only. Okay? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion to the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you, council, for coming out. It's great to see you guys again. And this meeting, see, this is why I like in-person meetings, because a lot of discussion, a lot of generation of questions, those kinda things. So we are, I am looking at, uh, continuing to do this, especially with mayor and council, and other committees.